I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I have Sean Winston over on the other side, Niall Shore. I'm Paul Bovier, Nicole Fecto, and Mike LaRue are here. Dave Andreessen is on the road.
So he says.
Well, we'll take his word for it. We'll be checking.
Put that in a minute.
So the first item that we have this evening is our public comment period, and we do have a small audience. Is there a public comment from the audience? Anything that relates to planning board activities would be fine.
Nothing yet.
Nope. So I understand just walking in that you are a student at Noble High School and you're probably working on a project.
Yeah, I guess so.
Yeah, well, welcome. It's going to be a meager meeting for you in a couple of weeks. Maybe there would be more if you came again.
But this is what democracy looks like.
You should come when we're talking about marijuana, if you really want to see a meeting.
We could. If we could actually talk about marijuana, if we wanted.
I love talking about marijuana. Let's talk.
No public comment. The next item is the approval of minutes, and I personally have not read them yet. I would like a few moments to go through them before we act on them. Any comments on the minutes?
I didn't see anything that seemed out of place, so.
The only thing that I think should be added is not whatever you have. So it's on the second page, the second paragraph where Ms. Feenster says, it's the second paragraph and it's the second to last sentence, "Mr. Barth will be using water just to clean the dishes." I believe that she also said for commercial kitchen applications.
Yeah, I think it's, the statement here, I think, is misleading because it really, I think more was added to that, how much water he's going to be using, but I don't think there was anything earth-shattering.
Yeah.
You know, as far as the water usage, so.
We saw when we were out there at the site visit.
It's not going to be a heavy user.
What it's going to be used for, relative size of the.
There's no irrigation or watering of.
Yeah, I mean, it just, their sinks, it's not.
So maybe to clarify it, it says Ms. Feenster said, "Mr. Barth will be using water just to clean the dishes," and the salon expansion is for nails. That's a very unusual sentence.
Nicole's point is well taken.
Yeah, I think that if we just add.
He's going to use it for the production of the edibles.
Yeah, commercial kitchen applications in there, and then I just want to be real clear with that application.
Is that all right? You got that? Should we separate the sentence about the salon expansion also? Because that's really, that's a second use in a building.
Yes.
And that should be in its own sentence?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's two separate uses in there.
And I think it was said that she could expand that. It's not worth talking about whether the expansion goes above the 25% thing, or, you know, that would happen if she ever did go that route. I have one change I think I'd like to see, and it's an old business, the third paragraph down where it says, "Dan Vincent said the existing foundation is buildable condition," which is not a correct sentence, "and the sprinklers would probably be up to the chief." I'd like to.
That whole sentence needs some reworking.
It does, and that foundation, it was actually said, I think Dan Vincent said, that it was not buildable because of setbacks and.
I think he said.
Was that the neighbor that said that?
It was the abutter that felt that it wasn't legal.
And that's missing totally.
Right, I think he said that the foundation.
There's a sentence there just above old business that says that he thought it was.
That was the public comment.
Well.
Right, so what Mr. Vincent had said was that the foundation was, like, stable. He didn't make a comment on the legality of building on it. It was the structural integrity of the.
Sound enough to build on, I think we can.
Yeah.
And when I read this, it's, to me, our code enforcement here is saying the foundation is buildable.
Right.
And I think it should be explained that it may be physically buildable, but we would have to look at.
Legally.
The legality of it.
Yeah, it still has to be determined if it's legally.
What did you say?
He puts some cells on the concrete.
Integrity, yeah.
That's a good one.
That's a, so it is, it may be.
That's all that he meant.
Yep, right.
Good catch, Mr. Bovier.
Well, thank you, but I mean, my point is, whenever I get picky like this, is somebody 10 years from now reading this will read that and say, hey, quote unquote.
Exactly.
I'm willing to bet several farms that I don't even own, that nobody will read this in 10 years.
Well.
But that's another story for another time.
Play it safe, yeah. Other than that, I think everything seems to be in order. So is there, I will entertain a motion for approving the minutes as modified.
I'll make a motion to approve the October 18th planning board meeting minutes as amended and modified.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Sounds good.
Although some favor of approving them as modified. That's flat to nothing. They're.
I think it was four and one abstaining.
Yep, I wasn't here.
Mike was out, not at that meeting.
I thought I saw your hand come up.
Nope.
No, he didn't.
I was down.
Nicole put both hands up.
Yeah.
I was stretching.
All right, so they are approved, four in the affirmative and one abstaining. And the rest of our folder that James gave us is empty, and I think he's telling us to.
To go home?
Well, to go home or maybe talk for a few minutes on.
The comp plan survey?
Well, the first item is the signs.
The signs, I would think.
Somebody want to explain to me what's the problem that we need to fix?
Well, I don't know.
I think.
I told him it was going to be on the agenda and asked if I could provide some other communities sign regulations for discussion purposes.
Well, there was a subsequent email that said that the CEO thinks that the maximum heights are too tall, so.
Yeah, I think that's what Dan thinks that the 20, or whatever it is, is too high.
But it's 20 feet only on 49 and 236, I think. I mean, it says only where the speed limit is above 40, is 45 or above. Could it be 20 feet?
Yeah.
I'm assuming that's only 49 and 236, or am I wrong?
Yeah.
Well, 45 miles an hour, I have a feeling it's going to be sections of 236.
Right.
Definitely Route 9, definitely Route 4.
Right, but is there anywhere else?
I think Long Swamp Road, maybe 45.
Hubbard Road?
Hubbard Road.
Long Swamp doesn't get up to 45, does it? 35?
I think it's 35 most of the time. The same for Little River.
I mean, I'm not sure, I have not had direct conversation with James, so I'm not sure where this whole thing is going or what Dan's thoughts are, but what I would suggest is, since you probably haven't had any time to look at those other ordinances, you may want to take this as an opportunity to think about completely wholesale revisions to the ordinance. You're probably the only community that I'm aware of that uses speed limit to regulate size of sign. Not that it doesn't make sense.
Or unique.
But, but you may want to look at other, some of the other communities that we provided and just, you know, think maybe it's time for wholesale changes. I don't know. Personally, signs are a very sensitive issue in communities, and it can bring out every business person in town because while we feel we want to have smaller, lower signs, businesses feel they need the biggest, tallest, largest flashing signs that they can get. So, you know, this may not be as easy as just saying, you know, let's lower it below 20 feet, or whatever you want to have for debate. It may be much, much larger conversation than that, or maybe you're going to say, we don't want to touch this.
Yeah, I started thinking about signs a couple of days ago, and I thought, the 20 feet came in and everybody had a comment saying, wow, that's two basketball hoops, that's really up there, and it is. And maybe we're the only community that, you know, goes that route. I don't know.
I mean, I'd suggest.
What is the 20 feet measured to, the top of the sign?
Yes, maximum.
Maximum height, so the top of the sign.
Yeah, maximum height.
So, you know, pulling out onto Route 9, Route 4, if you're pulling out from a business, depending on where the sign's located, the bottom of the sign would be more important to me as part of the, you know, intrusion into sight lines.
Allowing for sight visibility, that's right.
Down the road as you pull out.
Because really, I bet some of those, like, self-storage places out on, you know, out in the outskirts of town there, those signs probably are 20 feet high, and we don't even really think about it because they're within the scale of going 55 miles an hour.
Yeah, but I mean, the height is going to be relative to the sight lines of the road. Where, you know, how close are you to the road with the sign? Are you, you know, are you out far enough that you have to be halfway in the lane before you can see around the sign?
You know, I'm not even sure where these numbers came from anymore because they've been here for a while.
Yeah.
But what I do know is that we make signs larger, we allow a larger sign, the height of the speed limit is, which we thought made a lot of sense, and I think if you do the math on a 20-foot-high sign, if it starts near the ground, it's going to be way above the 64 square feet that's allowed. So, you know, there's just a little more to it.
Well, and that's, that also gets back to the, you know, if the top of the sign's at 20 feet, if the bottom of the sign's all the way to the ground, then.
It's going to be that wide.
That's a huge, well, you could make it, you know, how wide is it? How high is it?
Well, but. Is there any way we can eliminate all those junk signs that people go and post up, like mattresses for sale, and the, when the egg hunt, the helicopter egg hunt comes around, and we get all those stinking signs all over town that people are sticking in the ground? Can we get rid of those while we're regulating signs?
We do have that nasty little First Amendment to be worried about.
Oh, but.
Because I'd get too carried away.
But they put them on street corners and stuff like that just randomly.
Well, but, you know, part of the ordinance makes a distinction between temporary signs and.
Right, temporary signs are exempt from requirements.
So if someone's saying egg drop Thursday.
So those are called informational signs?
All of these rules aren't going to apply anyway. It's going to be the temporary sign rules.
There's no temporary sign rule. Temporary signs are exempt from land use requirements.
Correct.
And that's because I think.
It's like a yard sale sign, right?
That's because I think the state or main makes it that way.
I don't know, South Berwick has sign rules. We should look at South Berwick's sign rules. As a real estate agent, I know this, because they have rules about how many, even temporary signs you can put up as a, in, like, real estate signs and whatever, so it might be worth it to look at maybe some of our abutting towns.
Didn't we visit this a year or two ago when we had the burning issue of how long could you put the sign up before somebody from the town could take it down?
It was part of the informational sign discussion.
Right.
Oh, really? Oh, that was, I don't think I was here for that.
It was just something not worth remembering, but we have to.
That's true.
So it kind of sounds like.
So the first question I've got is, have we had a problem with the solution we came up with a year or two ago, number one? Number two, have we had a problem with the 20-foot maximum? I mean, somebody may not like it because they don't think it's pretty, but it, I'm assuming this has been around for a while?
Yeah.
Has anybody complained?
I mean, not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, so we need to find out what Dan's.
There's just something in me that says, if you've had a rule that's been in effect for 20 years and nobody's complained, why the heck are you turning around now and getting all worked up about it? So I'd like to know what the problem is.
Because we have plenty of things that people are wondering about that we could regulate.
We're not talking about a 20-foot sign out here.
No.
You're talking about a sign out on Route 9.
Yes.
It's an industrial corridor.
Now, there's a column on page 64, there's a column that talks about square feet, and it's, is that what the maximum square footage is? It doesn't, I don't understand.
Yes, yeah, like 32 square feet before.
Because this says post or freestanding, and then all these numbers.
Correct. So if it's a post sign or a freestanding sign, then those are the square footages you can have based on the zone and the speed limit.
So is somebody really going to build a sign that's 20 feet tall and 4.4 inches wa, 4.4 feet wide? It's like the largest toothpick you've ever seen.
[laughing]
Right? I mean, if the maximum square feet is 88 and the maximum height is 20, that would mean the maximum width would be 4.4, right?
So I would say at this point that what we should do is each one of us go home.
Well, am I missing?
And do some math, draw some pictures.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's not only the size, to me, the lighting is every bit as important, and we do have restrictions.
But lighting is, this size issue I don't quite get. I mean, does anybody really build a sign 20 feet tall and four foot wide?
They could.
I mean, I know they could, but would anybody actually do that?
No, no, but they're probably, if they're doing a 20-foot-tall sign.
Maybe it's 20 foot in the air.
They could be, you know, eight by, what, eight by eight?
Yeah, on 20-foot.
On a 20-foot high pole.
Yeah, so the entire sign's not.
Billboards.
So basically, this is saying that we couldn't have billboards here because that would be, right?
It would be greater than the square.
It would be way too big, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
So that, maybe that's what that's for, to limit or eliminate billboards.
If we haven't had any issues, though, as you just said, I think.
Yeah.
Do we want to get into making modifications because we just feel like it?
So I would propose that we table the size portion of this discussion until at least the next time, so somebody can tell us what the problem is we're trying to fix.
Sounds good.
But we should consider things like illumination, whether you.
Yes, and lighting and neon.
Neon.
Shine the light onto the sign, or you shine it.
I think this came up because I said something about the thing last, at the last meeting, approving that, because it said that there was no sign, and I just wanted to know if he was going to have a sign, and then that's when Dan said, well, he could have a sign, and I was like, well, we don't want a 20-foot-tall marijuana leaf sign. That, I think that little thing that I said.
Everybody pictures 20-foot.
May have started this.
Be careful what you think out loud.
I think there was something that Dan had before that about the sign height.
He seems to come right up with it, though, so that's why I was like, I just wanted to know if there was going to be a sign and what it looked like, because it wasn't on the plan.
I think Dan has a question or a concern that I think we need to find out.
Yeah, and it hasn't been communicated to me.
So let's do what Niall said, just table talking about the dimensional sign standards, but just think about signs, if there are changes that we think are a problem, and then we'll deal with it.
Yeah, because I think we have to include in that discussion is the cross the street.
Yeah, we are, blinking ones.
If we don't have many standards for crossing the street.
Why are we opposed to blinking neon signs?
Because most people.
They're annoying.
State doesn't allow them.
Yeah, they think they're very annoying.
The state doesn't allow them.
They also distract people when they're driving. Most people, most towns do not like.
Well, no, we should worry about it because we're the enforcer.
Like across from Walmart, you remember the real estate office there?
Ugh, that was horrible.
Oh, that LED.
Probably one of your friends, right?
It's not one of my friends.
The lighting should have bothered me more than the neon, to tell you the truth.
Yeah, all of it, but it also had.
That was blinding.
It also had fake news and messages on it. That was horrible.
It was universally despised by anyone that looked at it, so, you know, you can do some of the, so we can go ahead and think about it, and if we don't have any issues.
I don't know if, I'm assuming he gave you the copies of the ordinances that I provided?
Yes.
One of the things Paul mentioned was, you know, illumination and whatnot. Take a look at the, and this may go too far to the other side, but take a look at the Portsmouth ordinance, which I did provide.
Which one is, some of them were not labeled, so it was a little hard to.
Oh, and they're in our email, right?
Yeah, which was the Portland?
I saw.
Portsmouth? It's seven, I think the title, the chapter was 700?
Hold on.
Yeah, I think, I know they have a pretty comprehensive.
They have a very comprehensive, in fact, I was there when it was being drafted.
700?
And it's, it's very comprehensive. It talks about lumens. It gets into the more modern types of signs, you know, is a LED sign a externally lit sign versus an internally lit sign?
Section 700 signs, it's one, it's an attached.
It's ours, section 700.
No, it's an attachment to that, oh, it's Town of Wyndham that says section 700.
Well, okay, Wyndham is 700?
Yeah.
I see, Agunkwit, Auburn.
Wyndham.
So it's got to be one of the other two.
And I asked him to provide Portsmouth as well.
Oh, yeah, I see Agunkwit, Auburn, 700 is Wyndham.
Is Article 12 Portsmouth?
It might be, yes.
Yeah, this is real hardcore.
Yeah.
This is super hardcore.
It is, but it does.
I can't see this going in Berwick.
Oh, no, and don't get, don't get, take it the wrong way. For me, I mean, I think you can pick and choose stuff to use, or take a look at something and say, I like this, but it's going too far, and we can.
Yeah, like animated signs are prohibited.
Right.
I like that.
On this Portsmouth one, if you put up a sign on your property that said, "Have a good day," you'd be in violation, and under this ordinance, you need a permit before you put up a sign on your own property that says, "Have a good day."
Yes, again, they go, they go to the very extreme.
No, there's.
If you want to have a bad day, you need the same permit.
There's a sign in a window in downtown Portsmouth in a shop that, that said something else, and it really offended somebody. I think you can still do it.
Well, but you need a permit. You really want to ask somebody to go get a permit?
No, no, again, I think, I think it's important to read these, and you can pick and choose. You know, it's, you're not bound by this stuff.
This Article 12 may make perfectly good sense in Portsmouth because they're so.
Right, exactly.
Bridget, I guess is a nicer word than the word that I mean.
Well, I think some of the things to look at in Portsmouth are the style of signs that they.
That's right, a lot of it is.
Like in the downtown, like Market Square area, like the styles of signs that they use, I think are something that.
The monument signs.
That's probably how we ought to separate, I mean.
Even like South Berwick has.
What we do, what we want, we actually have some design standards that we would like to adhere to for across the street here, and I think that's going to be important. I mean, I could picture beautiful wooden carved signs that are painted, and they swing on a wrought iron, you know, I mean, that kind of stuff.
Wow.
Which is what Portsmouth.
Call me more.
But this is our test bed where Route 4 is not.
Yeah.
You know, they're really different animals.
Well, yeah, you're definitely not going to have the same.
I like the Portsmouth section where it says prohibited, because it really does, I mean, they take into consideration some kind of annoying things, like animated signs or flashing beacons and signs with sound coming out of them, and, yeah, signs mounted on vehicles or trailers.
What would be real helpful, Lee, is, could you send, if we're going to consider this again the next time, could you send the definition of sign section?
Sure.
Because, you know, it depends on, I am very troubled at the notion that somebody needs to get a permit to put up a sign that says, "Have a happy day" on their property. It really does bother me.
Yeah, no, that's.
But, but, not talking about the contents of the sign.
You know, but under our ordinance, that fits the definition of a sign.
Signs.
You put up, "Have a nice day," that's a sign, so whatever we do from here on out is going to affect.
But how about if it's 21 feet tall and it's blinking at you? It's not, "Have a nice day," that's the issue.
I'm not saying we shouldn't have dimension and style regulation, but, you know.
I mean, in some communities, you don't even need to have a word on it. Some court cases that have been reviewed and decisions made are that you can have just a picture, and is it conveying a message? Yes, it is, and if it's conveying a message, it is a sign.
Yeah.
Like a 20-foot-tall marijuana leaf?
Yeah, for example, for example, our definition of sign.
Yeah.
It says, "Letters, pictures, products, or sculptures." So you don't need words.
wording, that's right.
For it to be a sign under.
So it could be a sculpture.
Our ordinance definition of sign.
It could be the Paul Bunyan statue in Bangor.
That's right, that is, that can be considered a sign.
And I would like that.
We can hijack it.
My courtyard, right. All right, so let's just think about this, and we'll bring it up again, and this is, again, for like, the next time around, we have, you know, public hearings and then we have a vote on.
Oh, this is a long way away, yeah.
But we should, I think, also do this the way we did in others, which is by region in town, I mean, there may be, if we want to set.
Yeah, right.
The village overlay that makes no sense.
We've done Niles.
I like that.
We've done that.
Yeah, yeah, that makes a lot of sense to consider them as separate.
There's a small section in here on, you know, examples of what we like and what we don't like, and, you know, when you're talking about things that are subjective, not objective, it's really hard to nail them down, so, but you can say, like, we don't want bright blinking lights, you know, there are some things we can say that we don't want, no matter where it is, so, but we should break it down by districts, Route 4, Route 9, and downtown.
Agreed, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
A good amount of signs, all right.
The other piece of conversation tonight is that I guess James had drafted the comprehensive plan survey that he wants to send out, even though I don't think that we're officially undertaking a comprehensive plan update at this point. So if you want to take a look at the survey that's drafted and make any changes, again, I think it would probably be appropriate to bring comments or changes back to the next meeting.
You know, what would be awesome is if he had this ready and printed out for voting next week, considering, I have a feeling we might have a pretty high voter turnout, it would be great to just pass them out, save a little, save a little postage.
So if you guys feel comfortable with it as it is, or if you have changes of thoughts that you see in the next day or two, I'd say get them right back to James.
I've already filled mine out.
Paul has legitimately filled his out with the word wrap.
And I plan on filling out another dozen because I can vote as often as I can.
All of his answers are there.
That's a great idea, so if we can print out, you know, and have a stack of them, my guess is people would fit them out.
So I'd say get comments immediately back to James.
I didn't see any.
He's not working tomorrow.
I like it, too, yeah.
The one that we saw on the screen.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I will, if that's the case, I mean, he'll see this, I don't know if he'll see it tomorrow, but I will communicate.
I just have an annoying technical question for you.
Yes, sir.
Since it's not, since we're not at this point authorized to do a comprehensive plan.
Update.
Is it a problem calling it a comprehensive plan survey?
Uh, that's a great question. It's just the name of the survey, yeah, I mean, it's, just because we're gathering that data now doesn't mean that we won't be ready in the spring.
I mean, we could call it a planning board survey.
Correct.
If that's a technical problem.
Correct.
We could call it a planning board comprehensive plan survey.
We could call it a.
It's a survey.
We could call.
A survey.
We could, yeah.
It's your legal mind working overtime.
Comprehensive planning board survey?
Technical.
No, it's not that comprehensive, no. So I'd say we leave it the way it is, and we'll.
Comprehensive planning board.
All right, I feel like our work here is done.
Get rid of the draft.
Yeah, of course.
Get rid of the draft, print it out, hand them out, collect them.
Get rid of all of Paul's answers.
Process the data, bring it back to us.
I plan on getting my own stack and filling them all up. All right.
All right.
Now that we've had all this fun, is there anything else that we would like to cover? We have informational items. I know we have a big audience out there, they have.
They might have.
We just have, we have a good time usually, not always, but sometimes.
Sometimes we yell at each other.
Do we have anything, any information on what's happening across the street, speaking of across the street?
I don't have been transferred.
Have not heard.
We haven't seen any plans come to the planning board.
I have been told that was transferred, was I not told correctly?
I have not followed up on, on any communications that I've heard, so.
Yeah, so I thought the title was transferred.
My assumption is.
I'm kind of waiting to see a new site plan come through.
I don't, I can't confirm that the title was transferred, actually. My last communications regarding that, because I have somebody that needed to know, and from what I understand at that point, and it was beyond when it should have been transferred, and it wasn't transferred yet.
Hey, wasn't that supposed to happen in July?
Well, no, I, my understanding was like a couple of weeks ago.
So as of September 26.
Right, no, no, I think it was like in the last couple of weeks, maybe.
Well, as of September 26, he hadn't, we signed it, he hadn't signed it, and it was two weeks at that point, so, I mean, obviously that was a month ago, and hopefully he signed it, but we don't.
Well, yeah, and I don't know that for a fact. I've heard rumors of that.
It's passed on to me.
I have read the agreement that we have a copy of from all of Brownfield's work and there is no specific time limit in it. It says, it says something to the effect of a reasonable amount of time once the site has been certified, which is what we call a VRAP. And the VRAP, as I understand it, has been completed and issued by the main DEP. And so the ball is in Mr. Kahia's hands, as I understand it, to accept the property back. Because, yes, you folks went through, or the select board went through the process of initiating all of the signatures that they needed to do for that.
I mean, for what we know, then, we can say that it's imminent soon. And everyone hopes that when, when he becomes the owner of his property again and the town does not own it again, he will pay attention to us.
Yeah.
And get the show going.
Well, didn't we have, I thought the TIF incentives were tied to, wasn't there a timeframe on those? Didn't they go down or something?
I don't think so.
I thought it got reduced as time went by without the area being developed once he took it back.
Well, the sinking fund, if you will, in the TIF, changes every year. And I don't know what your, I actually haven't read anything about your TIF. But if your TIF is a twenty-year TIF, then it's gonna, the amount of money that goes into the account changes every year. There's going to be a peak period in which, like, seven to ten years out, where that's the maximum amount of money on a yearly basis that will go into that fund, and then it starts dropping beyond that.
So it's, I mean, it's more beneficial for him to get, once he gets, gets started right away.
I mean, it's really beneficial for all of us, you know? We can get things going.
Yeah.
No, but people ask me all the time and I just say, "Nothing, we don't have any plans. Nothing has come before the board."
Could we request an official communication from the Board of Selectmen to bring us up to date as to what's going on over there?
I will email the town manager and ask him if...
Yeah, just something official so the next time we meet, we all know exactly what's going on and we can communicate to the people who realize tonight's football game is a real stinker and are watching us instead.
All those poor people.
Yeah, and on that topic, Niles, I'd like to, last night I attended a sewer district meeting and I came to realize halfway through this meeting, one of the problems is no communication amongst the boards again. And usually we try four times a year, two times a year to get together with the selectmen, the planning board, the Berwick Sewer Board, because we should all be on the same page trying to achieve the same goals. And if we don't communicate, we're never, never going to do it. So we should probably...
Didn't we, the last time, all jump up for joy and agree that we finally were about to have regular meetings?
How long ago was that?
An irregularly long time.
It was in May or June.
I know, that's, that's the problem. I mean, everyone's kind of going off and going...
A joint meeting?
Yes. And here is a thought. Could we invite the school board, the school district, the school board to attend this meeting?
If you're going to discuss anything relevant to them, I would say that would be a great idea.
Well, since we get all sorts of assertions about anything that we approve and its impact on the school system, it might, I would feel better hearing from the school system directly what, how our actions might have an impact on them.
I agree. There's a few that are pretty vocal about no more residential across the street.
We hear it from lots of people, but I've never heard it directly from the school board. They've sent in, they've sent in letters from time to time. But if we're having an informal sit-down, I would like to hear their point of view about, you know, are they really as apoplectic as some people in town are about increasing multi-unit, approving multi-unit buildings?
So you, what you do is ask one...
About approving, you know, an unlimited increase in the number of single-family homes with three or four bedrooms? I'd just like to hear what they have to say.
So have one of the three Berwick board people...
If not all three of the three.
Or just invite them all three, all of them, which is be the right thing to do.
This will be fun right before the holidays.
I would recommend for that meeting, for that, to get, that's getting into a large meeting. I know, I was at the last meeting that was with just the planning board, the select board, and I believe in vision Berwick. And there were several times where we just, everybody just started spinning their wheels and rehashing everything. I think it, I think it's a little cumbersome with if everybody from every board shows up to the meeting.
Well, I was going to suggest, and the least to help me with Steve, is that if someone from, from you folks can provide me an outline of an agenda for what that meeting is going to look like, since we're requesting it, then I can communicate that through to the manager and he to his select board chairman as to what the agenda for discussion is going to be and get the proper people...
Do you have our agenda from the last time?
I don't.
Could you get that? Because my guess is it'll probably be about the same for the next one.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think you were our town planner at that.
Yeah, I just, just started.
Just started.
Yeah, yeah. I sat in on that meeting, but I was fairly new with you folks at that time.
But especially now.
Yeah, it'd be nice if there was some kind of a template for a format that, you know, the important items to cover and use maybe even like a public hearing format where you, each person gets, from each board gets, you know, three turns of five minutes each or something, just some way to...
Because it'd turn into like a circular discussion.
Remember when John Stoll was our planning guy back in the good old days? And we did that...
Nothing personal.
No, yeah, nothing personal, but, but he was really big on us learning about the consensus building process that we've only used once. And that, that format kind of worked. And when you go in all thinking that we're going to come and work together rather than, because it could be a, it could be kind of a contentious little bit of a meeting.
Why?
You know, as I remember, the reason the select board wanted the last meeting was their concern about being on the same page with us about across the street. Well, if title has indeed transferred, it's even more urgent now that we get together and get any other town boards and authorities also to come, you know, and all be on the same page as to what we expect to go on and what each different board can do to make sure we...
And what our limitations are and explaining our limitations as a planning board to other boards, because I don't think they realize what we can and what we can't do and what we're doing now to set us up for what we can and what we can't do. It's very hard to convey that to people.
And what we've already done.
Right, and what we've already done.
Review what we've already done over the last two years.
But a consensus building format, I think, might be the best, just the best, most amicable way to approach it.
Good.
You don't like free-for-alls, then?
I probably won't even go, so...
It's not bad until we start rehashing things for the third time.
Unless we get it catered by Corner Point Brewing. If we can get it catered by Corner Point Brewing, maybe we can have an...
I'll be there.
We can seat thirty people in there. All right. I guess the agenda's been fulfilled, except for the last public comment period, and I think I may have asked. And if you have any questions about what is the planning board, you know, how do we fit in with the Board of Selectmen and, you know, that kind of, I'm not sure what your project is that you're working on, but if you have any questions, you know, and you're invited to come in, you know, every, we meet first and third Thursdays. And sometimes there's some pretty interesting stuff that goes on.
For my project, on my assignment, it says that I have to sit in and take notes. It doesn't necessarily say like questions to ask, but where do you like fit in with the boards?
Well, so the state of Maine has, has laws that every town should have a Board of, a Board of Selectmen, a planning board. And if the planning board, if it's a small town like they have up in northern Maine, the selectmen do the job. But it's pretty much to administer state sureland zoning, local zoning, which is our land use ordinance, to administer that. To also plan ahead for things that are happening that impact, you know, the town itself. Like we've been dealing for the last four years now with the prime tanning property. We've gone through and updated our land use ordinance a couple of times since then. We deal with the comprehensive plan, which is the foundation block for just about everything that is formulated in this town as an ordinance. What else do we do?
We have a lot of fun.
Review development projects to make sure that the impacts aren't going to impact neighbors or neighborhoods.
And there will be land use amendments to be voted on next Tuesday.
Yeah.
Everything we do is voted on at a town meeting, a public town meeting. Any changes we make to our land use ordinance, the comprehensive plan is accepted by the town after we kind of go through what we'd like to see in there. We, sometimes we field surveys so we know which direction to go in, you know, that kind of stuff.
We kind of try to plan for what the town is going to look like in the future. Like we just kind of try to vision what the future looks like and set things up and set rules up according to...
Looking at these best signs, like how they're going to look, like whether you want the LEDs or...
Exactly, yeah.
How great are you in, if I might ask?
I'm 12th grade.
What would you like to see across the street? If you could have your wish of one or two, whatever, stores, I mean, just what would you like to see across the street that we don't now have in town?
Probably more like stores or something like there's, like those little strips in Summer's Worth of like the stores and restaurants and then they have like the apartment buildings on top and stuff.
Yeah, mixed juice.
It's called mixed juice, yep.
Wow, do you want to be on the planning board?
And, you know, that's not a joke because, I mean, we've entertained, you know, getting Noble High School kids, you know, interested in participating before. And it seems to start up and then it's kind of dropped. And I think it's because when you graduate, you leave town, you go to school and it's hard to keep it going.
If you're in this town after you graduate, what would keep you here? Jobs for one thing, but what, what kind of jobs?
Yes, jobs would be a good thing.
Well, I want to be a dermatologist, so something that would keep me there would be like a dermatology office or...
So say a building that could have maybe a medical office on the ground floor and...
Something.
Which I think isn't allowed use over there, but...
We're really experimenting. We've got 12 acres downtown that is now ready to be developed and we've come up with a lot of stuff in the land use ordinance as well as the comprehensive plan. And we're just waiting for this to get going because now we're, the town of Berwick has owned it for the Brownfields applications. We're handing it back to the funds of Jupiter. It's imminent, as we learned from Nicole. And once that happens, we're hoping that we start getting developers that come in and see what we want there and start building it.
So, yeah, so part of what we looked at with the, or tried to look at with the land, I think with the land use ordinance, is trying to look into the future to see what sorts of things we can put in there that will help guide growth, growth there, elsewhere in town, you know, kind of how fast things grow.